Welcome, everyone. It is Wednesday, December fourteen at six o'clock. This is a special meeting of the select board. We will review the agenda, which is very short tonight. Gail has one request, which is sort of underneath, we will review it under the second official item review and sign warning, which is the Secretary of State's office has advised us that we need to mail ballots. We can talk about that at that point. There are two items, two other items on the agenda, and if no one has any preference, we'll start with the budget.
I'm good to me.
Right. Thank you for redoing the budget. Yeah, it's horrifying, but thank you for redoing it.
For salary was a three point five percent increase.
Okay.
CPI went down to seven point nine, so.
Like, what it's gonna be.
You know.
Starting point, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. Yep, yep. And when you look at the FY twenty-two actual compared to the FY twenty-three, you go, oh, my God, we increased the budget by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The Parshbrook Culvert is throwing that total number off under highway. Are you guys at the bottom of the first page? I mean, it's still increased. Don't get me wrong, but that does shift it a little. There are a couple items that are new in here. I know Eric said he wanted thirty-two weeks of Glenn, and there's the number for us. I think we probably need to visit that. The health insurance got adjusted. And then a couple other things that Eric had checked on the cost of diesel, an updated cost for roadside mowing, et cetera. Thoughts? Questions? I'll start with Eric. Hi, Eric. This budget is too high. We need to take money out. Where would you like us to start? I'm open to all your suggestions. I will, sir, I, I understand your request for extra help being such a big increase. I don't personally feel that, I, I think that's too big a jump. You know, we went from five thousand to seventy-five hundred. Oh, look. Twenty-two actual was twenty thousand, so you, that means you got about twenty weeks in FY twenty-two, and I bet we're off to a roaring start in twenty-three. Does that?
Does that include, is this just from highway, or is this also, is this twenty thousand just out of the highway, or is that also from?
Like, this is all highway.
Well, thirty-five would include work that you had him doing for tree work. Whatever. I asked Eric to list of projects that he needs the help for.
Right. And so I think I know what your question is. Your question is, we paid ourselves back.
Right.
So is the number that you're seeing for FY twenty-two, the total for FY twenty-two, or the net? Is that your question?
Yes, that's exactly my question.
That's a good question.
The total for twenty-two is net because the highway is down farther. The, the, that way work on the town garage is down farther.
Okay.
And.
Forty-six eighty-seven, which is, right, right. This was just through July, June thirty, right? So the to, so what you're saying is the total was forty-six eighty-seven, which is the top line on page two, plus the twenty thousand eight thirty-five. That correct?
But some of that also didn't all, didn't all that, that didn't all go to Glenn.
No, right here, this number that says GM.
Then Merrill.
Right, so if we take, the heck is wrong with this thing? We take that plus this.
Right, twenty-four.
That's the total.
On my page, it's all the same, same here. So I was like.
I know.
Oh, sorry. Is this the one I printed at home, or, okay. I printed it home. Well, that's just confusing. Let me stop doing that part.
So we did.
If you mark it up, you're gonna do that.
No, that's.
So this twenty thousand dollar number is what we voted to, you know, within, what was it? It was with Frank that we voted to pay Glenn for an extra period of time. That's what that is. Okay.
Right. So the budget for the year we're in
Yeah.
is seventy-five hundred, and I'm sure that that was gone by September first would be a guess. And then if we were to look in the FY twenty-three, I think maybe it hasn't happened yet. There will also be a chargeback. Have you calculated that?
I have, but at some point you're gonna have to decide whether the budget will broaden or some of it, so you can do have it up or something.
Okay. So.
But there has been, you know, offset of road crew work with highway garage work.
For two fiscal years. Right, and I'm gonna guess that we're not, based on the meeting that Gail and I went to this week on town salt and sand shed, I guarantee you, we're not gonna build anything this summer. And I'd be surprised, but I suppose it's possible if we could start in the spring of twenty-four. I mean, they were talking about to get a state permit as four to six months.
Oh, wow.
After we go through a procurement process for a design, we do design, we approve the design, we hire a construction manager, we go out to bid, we get a cost, then we have to do all this permitting. I mean, they, they say it's two years.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
And, you know, they kept saying, well, you're taking federal money. You have to just understand that it's.
Yeah, it's gonna take a long time.
Yeah.
So far this year, well, as of October first, the extra help was eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars.
FY twenty-three is already at eleven thousand.
But we've spent
Six fifty-five.
Eleven, eleven and a half thousand on highway on the town garage. So depending whether you pay it back or not.
I see.
Yeah.
And we could be at zero if we decide to do that.
Yep.
And then there's the issue of how much have we spent on the town garage, and we're on the hook for one twenty-five to match the salt and sand? And oh, by the way, we probably need more than four twenty-five. So those are probably questions for another day. I do think that the context is helpful.
Right.
And I ask you a question, and then we all jumped in. You have any, I mean, looking at this total of six thirty-five and looking at our, if you take that fifty-four eight out of last year, last year was really?
Five ninety.
Yeah, five ninety-five two hundred.
Well, I guess on my math, well, again, Glenn, you can we can use Glenn for whatever he wants, basically, but we had to start somewhere in that number, so.
Completely understand. And I think it's been very productive to have a third person. I don't think anyone would question that.
So.
Been productive and I mean, honestly, could use them more.
Right.
You're gonna need, you're gonna need him some more this year, this fiscal year. Cause I'm sure Ronnie's got some time to use up before July one, and I've got some time we gotta use up for July one. So you're gonna need him.
So.
Right. So let's actually start there. So you each are taking, I don't really know, how many days are we trying to cover? Is it like three weeks each-ish?
Three and two.
I think it's more than that.
So four and.
Yeah, I said, two, right? So I think he gets like five, doesn't he? Yeah, I don't know if he's the match yet. It might be twenty-three or twenty-four days.
Yeah. Well, but he also has personal, so it's called five.
He didn't go out west, so.
Right.
He's gonna have some time that he has to, he has to use or he's gonna lose.
Right. So he has five, and you have.
Two or three that I have to use.
No, sorry, total in a year.
Yes.
Cause I think our very minimum, the place to start is to cover vacation time off. So five for Ron and three or four for you. So that's eight. And I think it used to be about a thousand, and I'm gonna guess it's a little bit more. And that's, my memory is that's why we went to seventy-five hundred last year, is that that was really just to cover vacation. And we had this plan to do what we did, which is, you know, we'll pay ourselves back from the town garage, and that'll cover. So, good, we've done that. And so, you know, this is the really challenging part of being on the select board for me, because I can justify all these numbers, and I also can envision what people are gonna say when they open their town report. See that our budget was five fifty in twenty-two, and five ninety-five in twenty-three, and six thirty-five in twenty-four. And I think it's important to acknowledge that some of that is we've added another building. So we have. Yeah, I took that out. So that's the five ninety-five two hundred. That's a really good point for that. So.
When I took Fred fifty-four eight from six forty, I get five eighty-five.
Oh, thank you. There you go. So it went from five eighty-five to six thirty-five, where we sit now.
Fifty thousand five hundred, five fifty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, some of that is, you know, I'm gonna call it cost of living, increase in health insurance, cost of living increases, cost of fuel. Health insurance went down be this year.
Fuel definitely didn't.
I think that number's actually a little low, too.
For fuel.
My math is thirty-two five.
That's for twenty-two?
I averaged the numbers you gave me and used the number, and I didn't take a discount when I got to that thirty-one, too, but. Yeah, I took the seven thousand three hundred thirty gallons and just timed it by four forty-six for no discount. Okay. And I got thirty-two five. I mean, it's minimal fifteen hundred bucks.
Well, let's do the lower number, cause honestly, like, if you did fifteen hundred bucks on ten lines, that's fifteen grand, so that helps.
The other thing that increases the roadside mowing.
Right. And I mean, you know, we all got spoiled with, you know, multiple rounds with Hollis and him really, you know, doing beautiful job and giving us an amazing deal for many years. And I guess the question is, is, is this what we need to do?
Right.
I think technically, if it's over ten grand, we have to go out a little bit. Which doesn't, you know, mean that we, I'm just, we need to let Dan know that.
Right.
Last year, he was the only one who bid, so I don't think he'll care.
Um, I did call Jeff Slade to see the, the new loader we got has a quick connect on it, and it has hydraulics on the front. So you could, in theory, run a mower on that machine. So.
But we don't have more.
We don't have one.
Just checking.
So I called him to see if there was a present availability on said item to possibly, you know, cause it probably costs five thousand, and they probably make five thousand. So if you had the machine to do it yourself, you could pay Glenn, you know, extra help to do that possibly. I don't know if it's, I don't know, he hasn't got back to me yet. The company that they had doesn't do it anymore, so he's still looking, but I'm just throwing it out there. You know, I know we're.
And then you gotta take into consideration how many years it's gonna take to pay that back.
Right.
But ten-five every year, it add up.
Right, yeah, it's forty thousand bucks in four years. So did you say it's gonna go on the?
New loader.
The loader, the new loader. Yeah, you can put them on anything. They got them on graders. I've seen them on graders.
It's huge, but it fits in the old town garage. I was surprised to see.
This is, I just.
Yep, well, I think it'd be good to, you know, we're not gonna finalize this till next month, so let's go ahead and get the price.
Yeah. So obviously, it's got side mounts somehow.
I think, no, it just pinned on the front like bucket. They got, West Rowland has a trackless machine, the small smaller that does the same thing.
Which is, so it has to offset somehow.
Yeah, it's got, yeah, yeah, looks like an excavator, sideways.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that, the loader has got a, the first gear has got a creep mode, and you can dial it up or down toward the speed you wanna go.
Right, so.
So it's, it's doable, but I just, I'm trying to find a way to pinch some pennies here in the long run. You're not gonna save any money in the short run. Is there a way that you could get something for the estate? You can, yeah, but the excavator is not as quick to move around town as the loader would be. You know, you're gonna spend.
Speed, you mean?
Yeah. So.
What about?
We use the loader less in the summer than we use the excavator, so. Split the help up.
It's good steer.
You could do it, but it's, it'd be a much smaller reach, you know, it's all about weight.
Right.
The skid steer, you can't reach so far, you're gonna dip over. It's.
You probably have to go around another hole.
Yeah. You can get on the arm while I'm applying.
Right.
I can get guys for the skid steer, too, but I think, I don't think you're gonna get much reach out of it.
This thirty-five eighty for Glenn, how many hours is that?
That's thirty-two weeks times forty thousand.
And what did he do this year?
How many weeks, I think, is what she meant.
Yeah, like, how many, how many, sorry, I meant, like, how many hours and weeks was he this, this year?
It's weird, those are.
Just trying to see if we can find a compromise number that.
I think he was at twenty, he told me it was at twenty-five.
Yeah.
But July one kind of messes us up because he was working before that, so.
Right, he's going from maybe July, January one instead of July one.
So it was nineteen, in FY twenty-two, it's nineteen weeks.
Nineteen weeks.
For this extra.
Yeah.
Fall.
Yeah.
I know we gotta shrink that number, but we just gotta figure out what.
Right, like, does twenty weeks, is that an easy number? Is that? So, you know, it's just, it's just picking a number, really.
So what'd you say, broken up? I know it was broken up, how many, roughly, weeks?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
But we were working on the garage, too.
Right.
Right. We don't have to have them, but.
It is.
So I would say, I would say we need coverage for vacations.
Right.
Yeah, and or it's really nice, or we don't get coverage for vacations, and we buy the mower, and one of, you know, that's what you guys do when the other one's away, and we don't get big projects done. And
That's the issue.
You know, my sense is that you're doing pretty well on this, the, like, required stormwater scope, but that doesn't mean that you don't have a really long list of other projects that we will absolutely make very little progress on. So.
Well, we are getting almost double the stormwater help, six thousand something to twelve thousand something.
That's good. Um.
This tree thing is gonna eat up a huge huge amount of time.
Depending on how we do it.
Right, no, I know, but I mean, even if you're right, but even doing it as efficiently as we possibly can, it's still a huge chunk of time.
Nine to go.
Yeah.
Right, and the question is, really, you know, we're a town of five hundred and fifty people.
Right.
How much can we actually do? And how much are we, the town of Timmott, and our voters willing to do, right? Like, do we wanna be an A-plus town, which would mean probably a third person all the time, buy the mower? You know, we'd be an A-plus town. Or are we gonna be a B-minus town? And I would say right now, we're like, probably in the B-plus, A-minus range. And
You can't afford it.
Well, you know, we've never, we never, we haven't had our budget voted down. I can't remember our budget being voted down. I'm sure it has been. But at, you know, at some point, and remember, we added twenty-four thousand a year for the bond, which this, you know, we're budgeting for our second payment, so we have.
And that might be less, actually.
Than twenty-four.
Cause I think this year so far, I think we got one more payment they made for interest. Now, we paid four thousand four. I would say this a little bit.
So, sure, I mean, let's get the best number in we can.
What if we did Glenn for twenty weeks? It'd be twenty thousand. Should get our over number down to thirty-four thousand seven hundred. And then what was that number that she just shaved off?
We do the bond payment to twenty-one thousand.
So that's minus three and minus fifteen.
So we're down to thirty-one thousand seven hundred over.
Oh, you're working, you're working that way.
Which is.
Um, yeah.
Closer to. It's a, maybe an easier number to swallow than the, and that leaves in the ten-five for mowing, which, if we decide later on to buy a mower and do it ourselves, can we have that line, can we change that line item to be roadside mowing, but we're paying Glenn to do it with our equipment?
Well, it'd be an hourly way.
Um. Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna budget an amount
Right.
for the task, and then if we put, say, five thousand dollars up above for labor, seems like a lot, but how many weeks does it, I think Paul said it took I remember him saying forty hours, like a week.
I think it's seventy. Yeah, I think it's.
Seventy, okay, so a week and a half to two weeks.
Well, we can take average number and work backwards it.
Fifty bucks an hour, that would be a hundred.
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 So that's a hundred dollars. Like, we do the maths. Five hours.
Yeah. It's easy math, but I still had to do it.
All right.
I didn't trust calculators from thirty, forty years ago, now I don't trust my brain, so.
Uh, Sherry wants to say something.
Um.
Can you buy, can you buy the mower with ARPA money?
Um, we can buy the mower with, we, we could buy a mower with ARPA money. We could put it into our capital plan. I will say that, you know, we need to have a conversation about salt and sand, because my sense is if we really wanna build a salt and sand shed, most of the ARPA money needs to go to that.
Okay.
So that's, that's a big question that I don't think we're gonna answer tonight, but those are both good suggestions, absolutely. And I'm sitting here trying to pare down, can I pare down the number in the capital fund? And like, you can pare it down for a year or two, and then you go negative, and it's like, oh, and then I have to raise back, so. Yeah, so I'm not sure, we could.
So the other thing to remember is that there was a fund balance on the highway.
Thirty, I wrote that down, thirty, yep.
Thirty maybe, but I will say that the carryforwards are dependent on being verified by the town auditors.
Yes, and I also think we can't, like.
And the, and the general fund.
Yeah.
Balance was
Sixties and.
Unencumbered was sixty-seven.
Right.
So you need some of that for official sludge fund, you know, which you should have.
Official sludge.
Cash flow or something, isn't there a percentage? But you could use that, you can have voters decide to apply that to the signature.
Right. That is what I was thinking.
Or, I mean, if you're looking for money, there's there's, there's something to get for the salt and sand. I don't think we're gonna save enough from the highway budget to make up the difference for the solace.
Absolutely not.
Between ARPA and, you know, these two fund balances, it might.
Right. Right, and the trick is, as I will say once again, we don't wanna use one-time money
Right.
to fund a inflated budget, because, you know, it's great, we have these, like, the reason we have these fund balances, part, a lot of that is the town drops, so we're not gonna have that next year, and some of it is delinquent taxes, which are not, like, you can kind of predict them. A lot of people spend a lot of time trying to figure that out, and I, I think what we realized is, you know, it just depends. Right?
Depends on the year or who pays.
Exactly, and we can't predict that. You know, like, Barry really thought that he could build a, an algorithm that would do it, and we're so small that, you know, one family's decision throws your algorithm off.
Right.
And people do the best they can, you know, like, let's just acknowledge that.
Very year to year.
Exactly. Yeah. Um.
So.
So we took, if we.
The other thing that comes into play, too, is in this year's budget, we find some money so that we don't have to pay back the fifty-six thousand that we've spent already on the town garage. We have to pay all that back. You know, in years past, we would spend thirty, thirty or forty thousand a year that was in the budget that we found that we didn't have to have. It was the fund balance, but we just spent it and didn't take it out of the capital.
Right.
Because the budget was inflated enough that it gave us wiggle room. If you pare this budget down too much, there's no wiggle room.
Right, right. And you can see that there are occasionally accounts where, you know, Eric is going over, and there are other accounts where he's under, and so it works out.
Yeah.
But ideally, you wanna try to budget for
Yeah.
what you think it's gonna be. Um, I, I have not yet heard you reduce any line items. Is it going once? Going twice?
I offered to Glenn, we lowered that one, I gave you one.
You gave me one, okay. Um, I don't, I don't have in front of me repairs, maintenance, and parts at eighteen in FY twenty-two. You spent thirteen five ninety-five. Could we bring that down to fifteen?
I wouldn't.
No.
Okay, just asking.
It's a circle. One thing, and you're done.
One thing.
It was six thousand dollars on the grader. Yeah. It's like that.
And that wasn't anything major.
No.
Those is.
That was a gasket.
Yeah.
So did we decide to leave these a few at thirty-one or move it to thirty-two? So I did it thirty-one.
Yeah, let's leave it at thirty-one. I mean, what do you guys think?
Yeah.
And so we'll keep roadside mowing at ten-five, and Eric will look into a mower, and then we'll contemplate that.
Yeah.
Um, and we could pay for the mower through the line item
Right.
in the year. We could, as Sherry suggests, use ARPA, we could also.
But remember, we're.
We could do a combo.
So just to be the devil's advocate, what if we got a old tractor and a whole side mower, but brush on it to go on it as opposed to buying.
Well, you can check that out, too, and see which comes out better. It does mean we have two more pieces of painting on, and.
Twenty, twenty-five thousand.
Sorry, what is?
A tractor.
Chapter.
So it's something that you can use. Or there might be somebody else that's willing to, to do it, or not as much as.
Right, if we have.
Well, but if we just went to ten thousand.
What if we put it up?
We didn't put it up.
Cause it wasn't over.
Cause we didn't expect it to.
Yeah, so what if we went?
Went to ten?
Went to ten, or went to nine fifty.
Yeah.
You're probably gonna be under still.
Right.
I just asked him, you know, what do you think?
Yeah.
I throw a little bit money.
Or we could say it's a hundred hours. And do ten.
We could say, well, depending on what his rate is, I mean, he made the point, which I respect, you know, it depends on the cost of diesel fuel.
Right.
Right, cuz you can't predict that, um.
And are there requirements for, cuz is it twice that it's mowed? Yeah.
In the, the first time around, they load two paths, and then the second time, isn't it just the parallel that they go around once more?
Oh, they're doing that.
To go every day once more.
Yeah.
But I know, uh. Allen's second bill was only thousand dollars, first one was seven five hundred, so that's why. We wanted Eric to check in with him, because I know it took him more time than that, but he had a training on his equipment to charge his slush or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't you go.
I think that's when.
Got more hours than you paid for. Just.
Right, so that's why.
Right, it's.
Just because we put ten five. Doesn't mean that that's all we're gonna spend on it.
Yeah.
The guy doing it said it's probably this much.
Right.
And, and also, don't forget you're, you're looking at chipper too.
Yeah, we're gonna, well, I don't know if you, has got into the email for next year. So, there's gonna be some work that we need one for, so. Well, well, if you wanna do it. I guess that one's. Oh, it says budget.
I can't hear you.
Sorry, it's this budget, uh, that we're looking, I mean, twenty twenty four is.
Yeah.
So. It wouldn't be this budget, our next paving round is in twenty twenty four.
We're starting technically in John.
Well, if we just do. We just reduced Glen. And the bond payment, because it's down to. Six, twelve, seven fifty. Just slightly less of a scary number. I don't think we're gonna get under six hundred thousand.
And so the, the way that we would show, um, using some of that carryover money is we would show it as a revenue.
Right.
Is that right? And we don't have the revenues, you didn't put a number into the taxes because you don't know that.
That's based on how much of a budget we set.
Right.
You said six hundred thousand dollar budget, different than if he said of five hundred thousand.
And this is with the wages at. Three point five percent. And we did, last year was at five percent, right?
Yep. This is where, remember last year I said, oh, let's make it four point five, and we did it, it was like seven hundred.
Yeah.
Frank was like, God, they don't be cheap.
As while we're pinching all these pennies, I also do feel like going under that.
Everything is more expensive.
That far under, uh, you know.
Yes.
That feels like we should be, that is not where we should be under.
Yes, well, the other thing is, we don't have a crystal ball for what next July one will be like.
Right.
Hopefully, things will be better.
Yeah, but we're at eight point two, so we're down to seven something now.
We're going the right direction.
Going the right direction. But three and a half feels too low for what.
And that's just that, so you can make the same money you made last year.
Right, exactly.
Hey, you're doing a nice job.
Right, that's just the year, let's keep up with. All of your cost of living.
Right.
Well, you could do a Hollis, Hollis used to not take a raise and give a raise to his health. Because he wanted to keep his health.
My health almost makes what I do now.
Uh, no.
I think, uh, overtime balances that out, I guess.
Uh, no, cuz Eric, it's supposed to be overtime.
No. That, yeah.
Unless you meant overtime, it balances out. But you know, when you're making twenty eight dollars an hour and you get a three and a half percent raise, it's more than if you're making twenty three dollars an hour, you know.
Understood.
It was always a thing with the school board, they would give the teachers, you know, three or four percent. And so it's thousands of dollars, but the custodian who made ten dollars an hour, wow, we can only get them two percent. He was like, really?
To Frank's point.
That's where they saved the money was on the custodian.
And, you know, like, we can look at making it four percent, or four and a half percent, or five percent, I would say we need to find something else to cut. Because.
Yeah.
I feel like we're already too high, and that is. By no means a reflection of the job that our crew does, the needs that we have, it's just. Right. Part of the reason, you know, we would be adding to that cost of living increase.
Well, we took last year's budget and we add seven point seven percent. Isn't that basically the same idea as? Like what the whole world was doing?
What is seven point, seven percent?
I don't seem to have a phone, you have to tell me.
Look my on my truck.
If you signed by last year's budget by seven percent and get six hundred and twenty six thousand.
That's the five eighty five two hundred.
At the five eighty five two hundred.
Is what, six again?
Twenty six. One sixty four.
It just just got where we are.
And if we gave. If we increase the wages to. Four and a half percent, what would that look like? I can't.
That's not something I can do off the top of.
She neither. Right, right.
Take the twenty twenty three budget number and add. Four percent, Kelly. One oh seven, seven hundred times four percent.
It gives us a ballpark, yes, saying that. The way she does it is more, um, accurate than that, but that's a good, um. It's a reasonable place to start.
Right, one point four three five brings it to. The one oh seven seven brings it to one 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 five one zero two four hundred soft, so if we did it by one point oh four. It would be one twelve.
And if you do one point one five, one point oh five.
Hundred thirteen one.
Right, and then, just so you know, then the overtime goes up a little bit, and then the FICA goes up a little bit, and then, right? So it, it kind of cascades, it's not as.
It's not.
It's not as minimal as it looks, but it's not huge, not like, but whichever costs, for example.
Of like, you know, six or seven thousand. Does that sound?
Right, but so, so part of the discussion is to be. You know, you have a carryover from FY twenty two, you might want to have one from FY twenty three. We've got a general pit fund carryover. Can you apply any of that to this incoming budget, or do you wanna just keep it for the salt and sand shed? Or, I don't know what point you're gonna decide. Whether the capital fund has to reimburse the highway fund at fifty six thousand, or if it's a good difference, or.
Realistically.
Winter we have.
Right, realistically. We're not looking at doing the salt and sand for, salt and sand for a couple of years.
Well, we have to start the process, and in order to start the process, you have to have the money. So you can't start the process with four twenty five and design a building that costs six hundred. I, I don't, I mean.
Right.
Sure, I guess maybe you can, but. Seems a little.
So how much last, our last meeting, it was said that we needed to have a hundred and twenty thousand.
I think four twenty five is the total, so they give you three hundred, and we have to come up with one twenty five, so that's like.
We have a hundred thousand.
No, we have, we, I think we have one twenty five. But we need to stop spending.
More money on the town.
We just stopped spending, yeah. There'll be a few little things here and there. But I feel like we can, that we can come up with through whatever, right, carryover, ARPA, something. But the bigger question is, and this is a digression that we can do now or later. Um, Galen, I don't know how much Eric heard, he'd run the meeting late, you know, we. Sat down with the guy from the state and our project manager, and. He's, he started out by saying, we've given thirteen or fourteen of these grants, and only three towns have built them, because no one has enough money. And they keep going out to bid, and prices are coming back way higher than anyone can afford. And so we said, okay, is there anybody who's building something like us? And Pittsburgh, which I think we should probably go visit and stay in a little bit, um, used Otter Creek as their. Primary contractor, they did a clear span building, which is one of the options we looked at. It's approximately the same size, and it was four eighty three. Construction, on top of construction is forty thousand dollar project manner, plus all design. Plus all your permitting. So it's probably, and this is what I wanna know, six hundred, and it was two or three years ago.
Right. Which was actually right around when things were also really bad.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, I, I am not at all, we left that meeting with our. I think fairly astute project manager saying to the state guy, listen, they've already done all the preliminary site engineering. Can that just be used? And he says, well, we have, if you didn't follow the federal procurement procedure, you're gonna have to start over. So there's that. Um, I am fine with the, you know, budget wherever we put it. With the understanding that we have this carryover, and we're gonna use that, so when you, the taxes get set. It isn't really, you know, as big a jump as it looks like. Where this is gonna be hard is in a year. None of these numbers are gonna go down.
Right.
Right, and you might not have that big, I mean, you, that's what we just said, you can't depend on the carryover.
Yeah.
So. Um. I do think we can reduce the equipment fund, and the question on that one would really be. What are we thinking about a chipper? Cuz right now, we can just slide a chipper in and we're fine. Um. And we could do that even in. We could do that, if we stick with the plan that we have here, we could do that in fiscal, this fiscal year or next. Or even, we could do it for the, we could do it, we could do it, it's fine, not a problem. We could probably skim a few thousand dollar, ten or fifteen thousand dollars for salt and sand out of here, if that were something we wanted to do. Or we could reduce the, the basis that we're working on, so that that number goes down. And we're not, you know, carrying this extra money.
I think, I think we should put a chipper in. So.
For this year.
For this year.
So that will leave us. Um, with just enough money to buy a used grader next year.
Okay.
I think we would still be fine.
To produce it some amount, you said?
Uh, no, we'd be fine to put the chipper in.
Yeah.
And then the question, you know, I don't think you can do, oh, right, maybe you can, if you can.
Would you say the grader was?
I think we have budgeted seventy nine or eighty.
Yeah, we have seventy nine in the budget, right?
Jeff said seventy five was a good number.
For used, used grader.
Yeah, I told him to keep his eyes open, cuz I knew it was. I knew it was on the horizon.
We got the one we have from the town of Johnson, I think, we've been. Thousand one hundred and fifty one dollars or something.
She called it town of Johnson.
They probably have one ready to go, right?
Some towns you place them quite often, so.
I just don't see like your trucks going down either. Know what I mean?
Exactly.
Mainway.
You know, it's just.
Right, we're buying our next truck in twenty six.
Once they start seeing that, it's, they're selling.
Well, they got you.
They got you.
They got you.
So car manufacturers, they sell.
Yeah, and just like, to put that in perspective, so the last truck we bought in twenty twenty two was one fifty net. To trade in, and if I inflate that, and we buy our next truck in twenty six. It's one sixty nine, seven eighty two, and then the next one in twenty nine is one seventy eight.
And you're inflating that at two percent.
Two and a half, yep.
Not seven.
That's, no way.
So if you bump that to seven.
Well, and I think it, it depends, right, because. Someone, you've pointed out, I think we paid a hundred and twenty five for the loader twenty five years ago, and we just bought a new one for one fifty nine five net. So.
I thought that was not that at all.
Yeah. I will say, I met two gentlemen who work in Polit, and they think that we are. Just like living the high life up here, all their trucks are fifteen or twenty years old, their garage is falling down.
Yeah, it is.
Sounds horrible. I said, wow, those guys don't know how to plan. But.
Or spend.
Right, yes, I agree.
Yeah, they're, they're highway garages.
I know.
It is a dump. It is. You ever gone down there?
I've driven by it, I've never been in it, yeah.
Well, just driving by, you're getting. Yeah, just drive by, it's not pretty.
You wouldn't think of it that rough.
No.
Maybe I've driven by it, and I didn't even know.
You probably have.
Right.
Within the grandville, you've driven by it.
I've driven by it many times.
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, I was like, oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, unless there's an actual town equipment sitting out there, you'd never, you'd never have a problem.
It's like an old guy. Like, really old.
Well, it might be we build a salt shed instead of a salt and sand shed.
Well, the trick is that I don't. Uh, you heard me ask that question, did he answer the question at all when I said, well, can we build something smaller, what are the limitations? Right? He didn't really answer that question, and, you know, I put in there what we thought we were gonna build. And I was like, three hundred grand, we're good.
Yeah.
But, oh, I'm not quite sure.
I don't know what.
And.
You know.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, but there has, you, what size is that?
Well, that's.
Gigantic.
Pretty important, like, if we all can, if we can just build a shed for the salt. That would reduce that much, much more.
Yes, and we would still have the problem of being terrible neighbors to the Crances. Which is, by the way, what we got the stormwater grant for.
Yeah.
Because that is our stormwater runoff problem.
Yeah.
And I don't know, like, that's where I imagine the question would come. With Scott Burley, if we said, yeah, we're just gonna do salt, he goes, but wait, your stormwater. You identified the pile as part of the problem, like.
Oh, right.
All my photos are of the runoff from the pile, which I would suggest, next time you go, don't walk down there, it's.
Oh, yeah, it's real. Hope we got a grant for it, so.
When you said Pittsburgh.
Somebody thinks it's real too.
Pittsburgh building is three thousand square feet.
No, that's Pitts Field was three thousand.
But sand is all.
Ford was nine thousand.
Okay.
That, that's sand and salt.
Well, that's what we need to learn, it's, it's very much what we were thinking.
Yeah.
It's nine thousand square feet, which is close, not quite what you were asking for. Um, but, you know, I, I think it's gonna be smaller, Eric, there you go. So that's something for you to think about, right? Like, so we get half our salt, how much smaller does it make it? Like, I.
We put our, all our salt in it, and then, and put, and move the pile near the building, sand pile near the building.
The problem with the sand is you get the snow in it, and it freezes over.
Right.
So it gets rained on, and then you get the big chunks, and then in the spring, we got this, well, number one, you gotta run everything through the grizzly.
Right.
They get all chunks out, and then if it gets wet, it freezes to the truck. As you're working, which is really pain in the butt. And, and the more snow it's got on it, when it melts, the more water it's got, so when it does get cold, the thicker it freezes. So the drier the sand, the better. But, and you don't have to worry about runoff, cuz there's no rain.
Right. Um, there are a couple funds in here that I would just like to inquire about, again, I know I have. Which is Highway Reserve, looks like we spend the money.
That money is going into the reserve. If you look on the special accounts thing.
Yes, so, thank you.
It's a capital paving and road construction reserve fund, it's now got thirty thousand dollars.
So this is, this is a legacy from a previous board. And.
When we had a project that we wanted to do some reclamation and we needed money. In addition to what we had, we didn't have any money, so it started. Fun, so we need to do some big reclamation project, dig everything up before we pay that, there's money there to do that.
Right, and the other approach would be to do the reclamation and pay less that year and get a little bit further behind. So.
Work, and so you could ask voters if they wanna repurpose that money.
Right, we could also just stop budgeting for it. And we have thirty thousand dollars. And it'll get used and. You know, I don't think we've used it since I've been back on the board, is that true? It's five thousand a year.
Because typically it takes. Thousands and thousands of dollars to do it, so. We just started putting money into it so we could figure it out and we had a big project, really, you gotta dig up half a mile or more. We do it, this year's reclamation was critically squat compared to some of the things that.
Okay, that's one idea, just throwing it out there. Um, the other one is the Highway Improvement Project, which is also kind of a. Catch-all, I'm not quite sure what you're throwing in there. Is that what, how you're doing stormwater projects or what are we using that line for?
That was the. Crack ceiling of. The height of pavement.
Oh, we were gonna change that name to crack ceiling, weren't we?
Well, originally, that was pulled out of paving because the select ward at the time wanted to do some. Ditching and brush cutting work, so they wanted to have a little pot of money that started out at twenty-five thousand and. You know, it's down to ten now to do extra projects. And over time, it has been used for other things, but the last couple of times it's been used, is used for cracks.
But that's the history behind that one, yes.
And you were gonna look into crack ceiling ourselves or something? How'd that work out?
Um. We can do it ourselves for way more cost effective. Well, you could probably steal five thousand from there if you wanna do, cause I think. I think they said you can rent that machine for a month or four hours. And. I can't remember if that comes with the, pretty sure it comes with X amount of rubber.
Who, yeah.
And then, you know, if you use more than that, then you have to go get it.
Yep.
But it's. Literally like they are four thousand dollars a day and you can rent the machine for four thousand dollars a month. And we don't hold me to those numbers, but it was plus or minus in that area.
So how do people feel about renaming that crack ceiling and making it five thousand?
I feel good about that.
Eric, you feel good about that? Yep, okay, well, there's five. And how do people feel about, um, the description of the reserve fund and setting aside five thousand dollars annually, which? Um. You know, it's depending on this, it's less than depending on the tax rate, on the other hand. You know, I don't know what you have coming up for big projects. Um.
I emailed you guys.
Did you? I read my email.
I just sent it to everybody or just Catherine?
I thought it to everybody.
Yeah, I got it, I just didn't know.
I'm trying to get it done yesterday, but I didn't, didn't get there, but yes, I got.
I didn't.
I had.
Well.
I don't see it, but.
I saw something pop up on my phone, let it, ignore it.
There you go.
I will send it again.
That'd be great, thanks.
No, last thing I got news on Friday.
Yeah, I sent you the preliminary punch list.
I did see that.
There you go.
I didn't see that.
Uh, I just sent it to Eric, he's gonna edit it, you know, just read it over and then it'll go public. I was the note taker.
I'm not seeing.
May have to do it again. Have it written down.
Okay. Were there other things in that email that we don't have at the moment that you wanna? There with us?
It was just basically a summer work project. Work plan.
Yeah.
It's just paving, we're gonna start it. Falling for town line and like our way back. There's some work I'd like to do down through there before, I wanna, I'd like to cut that tree down that's, we plow around by the swamp. Um, there's a pile of crap, I'm not sure what's in there on the other side of the road from the swamp. That's holding water, there's a little belly in the, the pavement's bellying out there and I think it's cause it's wet. So that's, it's not, nothing too serious, but there's just a handful of things I'd like to do before we pave that.
So I think part of that reserve fund was intended to address. Run them all right in front of Isaac's house there someplace with Bill, Bill and Madeline Collins, there was a spring or something in there that needed. There was something there that needed attention before it got paved again, I mean, we paved it over the last time, but. Yeah, there was some, there was something major there that needed to happen.
I thought Hall of Puss would be drainage in there, I remember and put the grain.
But I think it needed more than what he did, but at the time we didn't have the money for it, so I could be wrong.
All right, how, um, just to close the loop on some of these things I've asked and we haven't decided. Highway Reserve Fund, we're gonna continue to fund at five thousand a year or we're gonna stop funding. Uh, just to reduce the budget.
Look at the extra help and get five more.
Would that be, would that be your choice? Would that be a choice? I mean, this is exactly the kind of feedback that you have every right to give to this board, which is, we're struggling.
So. Um. We haven't used it, but.
There's thirty thousand dollars sitting in the bank for a future project and we can continue funding five a year for a future project, not yet addressed.
But, but it's a fairly new line item.
Six years old or?
Yes, is it seven, seven now because it's thirty-five in this year's.
Okay.
Seven, in seven years, we haven't touched it.
We haven't touched it because it was for a big project and we were gonna build up to and get to. That was the thought at the time it was created.
What was the big project?
An unknown project that would come up.
Yeah, I would.
We could have used it this summer.
So.
I, I would have to say it was not on my radar as something we even had.
Yeah, it wasn't on mine either, I know.
There you go.
So.
Now you know, you have it.
In my, I, my opinion. I. I think we should roll it into extra help.
For this year?
Yeah. But I, but I fix this my.
Meadow's gonna say something and then we'll know what people want to do.
You can see smoke roll on that right here.
Well, we move, it doesn't.
It doesn't help.
Doesn't change the budget, it just changes the line.
Right.
But it changes how much you're gonna get done.
Right.
Right.
Which makes sense and I think it's up to Eric and some, you know, I.
Think that's his idea, actually.
So if we're getting the feedback that. That is what the road commissioner would prefer. Um. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I.
I just say yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. My other question is if we're renting the crack ceiling machine for a whole month. Does it? Extend any of our paving at all?
Absolutely.
And would we be able to pave?
Well, yes. Once we. What I'm being told.
Yeah.
And what I've seen is it makes the pavement last longer.
Right.
So we, it should help us catch up.
Right.
Then you said that machine was for great, for is great in the month.
I believe so, yes. But, I mean, you could get it. You could probably get it for two weeks, but it's one of those things, you can't do it in the rain.
Right.
So you gotta have the guys for the people and you gotta have weather. And if you go, I think it's in, I think they said they're in Concord, New Hampshire, they're the closest place that rents this. And. Um, I believe they will bring it to us, but I, I didn't get, I didn't go down that road that far, I just wanted to see like, how's it stack up against Nycow? And Nycow is forty-two hundred dollars a day, forty-five hundred dollars a day, and this was the same money for a week, or a month. I'm like.
But it would be better for us to have the machine here spinning.
Right.
To use it, oh, look, this week is gonna be clear, sunny, use the machine.
Stop and roll, get what you can.
Right.
And then they're. Well, they would come in handy for that.
Yeah, so at least it feels like, uh, cause imagining that paving is only gonna get more expensive.
Right.
But if we can extend our paving, then. Thinking of a budget that's gonna continue to get bigger.
Well, diesel.
Doing things that are going to continue to keep it.
Right, so I think what I'm hearing is, um. Uh. Highway improvement projects will be renamed crack ceiling and will go to five thousand dollars. And, um, the Highway Reserve Fund will go to zero for FY twenty-four. And we will put back in another five thousand dollars to the extra help line, which will make that approximately twenty-five. Is that what you were, you had taken fifteen out, I think, Meadow?
Yes, so, yeah, it would be twenty-five.
So, I mean, I just, I, my personal feeling is that's gonna get us farther ahead.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah. So I don't know how many hours that is, it may not be a divided on them. Easily, but I just, but I, I said twenty thousand, cause that was.
So.
Side on what the raise is, I'll actually calculate.
Okay.
What the salary is for.
Yeah.
Twenty weeks or twenty-five weeks or whatever.
Right.
Yep.
But it puts us closer to.
Yep. Any other numbers we can reduce gravel and stone, we've been running seventeen to nineteen, we have twenty-two, five in.
And leave it.
Yeah, you would, you would say that. Um, I will spend some time looking at the equipment fund and if we can drop it even to back to seventy-five, that's another close to five grand. Right, so I'll let you guys know, I'll work on that, I started doing it and it's really bad to work on that when you're not paying attention, cause it's too easy to mess up.
Yeah.
Might have to do that. All right, so I think. If there are no other suggestions, we'll, we'll all sleep on this for whatever it is, three weeks or month. And we'll come back and it will be on the agenda to finalize in January. And we will now turn the page to general. And, um, just checking, you, you did give yourself, yes, you did give yourself.
Yep.
The raises, et cetera. Select Ward Assistant, it, it doesn't look like you gave yourself a raise, I will say. I completely acknowledge that the Select Ward Assistant job has just absolutely grown. Um, a lot.
So.
And I, I wonder if that's enough. At nine.
How many hours is it roughly, do you know?
I don't know.
Look it up, yeah, yeah.
I can do that.
Got to be pretty close to a full-time job in itself, I think.
Just be a couple hours of making it.
Yeah.
Um, I did increase the assistant clerk and treasurer hours.
Yes, you did. Can you fill those?
Um, we have to fill them.
I like that idea.
Does Trish fall under that heading?
She's an assistant right now, yes, for in fact. But I've been trying to get somebody a little more financially oriented.
What was the increase in the old cemetery for?
The old cemetery, that is. Because there are some headstones that need some work. Glenn mold them this year and I had him do some of them. Cut down some trees and stuff, then I tried to encourage him to come to the historic society meeting. So that we could apply to the old cemeteries, there is an old cemetery association that can get grants from, you know, for cemetery. But I wanted to put a number in there to catch somebody's attention to say, hey, we need.
Yeah.
We had to do some of this.
Mission accomplished.
There you go.
Number.
Someone should write a grant, good idea.
Seems like a grant for a thousand dollars is.
Well, I forget the grant, we, we have them a couple of times, um, Sawyer Cemetery.
Yeah, on the second. Can you figure out how to resend that? I sent it to everyone, but apparently it didn't go.
So with somebody else's email, I ignored, sweet.
I didn't see it enough. But I'm also not getting emails from the Moth Perks and Treasures Association. Because you've. Listener.
True.
That.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
It's susceptible to sins, sending a lot of spam, so they won't let me through, which is downtown, sorry to myself and whoever. We tell their filter won't let through the, we've been on the service emails.
Geez, that's unhelpful.
But yeah, details. Filter will let through detail scams, I mean, I keep getting them for all the world, it looks like it's from detail, but I know it's not. I send it to the tech person, oh, no, we would never ask you to do that, but.
Oh, man.
And how is your filter, I think something to the detail, get through there.
And keep going, yeah.
So you wanna pump that back to five hundred?
Yeah.
I was log care only a thousand.
Because FAS is, does a really good job and you don't charge much.
And the school pays for the whole green.
Oh.
And the, does the church pay for the church and the school pays for the school and?
Yes, the school.
What about the cemetery?
The cemetery association pays for the cemetery.
I was like, man, that is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we think, maybe, I don't think the church got in the bill. Stan used to pay for his and the church.
Yeah.
So we think that it could be FAS.
Welcome, welcome to Chinman.
Well, it took them two months to start. Um, I'm still trying to get them the bill from September, we haven't got FAS's bill from September. I've emailed them and phone called them, I guess.
Was that part of the agreement, we sold the house?
No.
Wouldn't, you have to continue paying for the lawn care.
Yep, any, um, questions per Gale on the general or suggestions or other pieces of information?
Is what it is there.
The only thing I have to check on is under law enforcement, the liability insurance. On what we got sent, it seems really high. And all it's supposed to be covering is the animal control officers.
Is that why you have a question mark and sort of a number?
Yeah. Because of what they sent us, it was, you know, a few hundred dollars and it wasn't near the sixty-eight like they filled the stash. But that's, that would be, but it's not thousands of dollars. Pick anything.
Yeah.
All right, we're over an hour, we were hoping for an hour, are there other comments or questions on the budget? I did hear a conversation about a wood chipper, do we wanna make that decision and pay for it out of the capital fund? Do we wanna kick that down the road, maybe to ARPA? What are people's thoughts?
My thoughts are we shouldn't be using one-ten money to buy a piece of equipment.
Uh, I think that's actually fine. Uh, I think that's actually fine. One-time money to buy a piece of equipment. It's one-time money to fund a budget that comes back to bite you again.
Right.
That's where I have personally felt the pain.
Yeah.
Um, so that's why I always say it because we like did that, like, oh, look, we can reduce taxes by.
Yeah.
Twenty thousand dollars and then the next year.
Yeah.
We had to do it twice. And poor Gail sits here and people go in and come in and they say, what the heck? She says, we reduced your taxes last year. Don't you remember?
Right.
And they don't.
Yeah.
And I understand completely.
Yeah.
So. Um. Yeah, I would. I'd use it for.
Okay, so I think we're looking for two motions. One is a motion to buy chipper out of the capital fund and that a number I've heard twenty five. Per used chipper. I think Eric has done a little shopping and that feels like that's a good number. You're allowed to spend less, by the way. Um, and then to preliminary, you know, accept the budget as written, linearly understanding, we're gonna revisit it, um, just final time next month. And there are a couple of things. I'm gonna look at one thing and Eric's gonna look at some stuff and anybody else has other things they wanna look into, that would be great. So.
Oh, wait. Wait, excuse me just a minute.
Yes.
What did you decide on salary increase? You're gonna leave it at three and a half, you're gonna change?
Oh, good job. I would entertain a motion on that one.
I think we should, we should, we should do five. That's my thing.
So you wanna ask Gail to run for next time with five?
Yeah.
For everybody across the board, everyone five. Okay.
I, that's how I feel. I don't know how you should feel. That feels too high, but.
I was thinking five and a half, but so five point five, but.
What do you want Gail to run it up for next month?
We did five last year. That's why I was thinking five. And it might be that they're getting a three percent decrease. And or two and a half percent decrease.
Yeah, I, I think I've said, I, I think that's very generous. I mean, I would be interested if you could get on the list or to know what. Other towns are doing. I, yeah. I, I know I have not heard anyone in the business world doing it. I sit on two nonprofit boards and we were hard pressed to do five. Of course, our salary line item is significantly larger than this though.
Right, oh, yeah.
You know, a month or two ago when towns were starting the budget, they were doing two to four.
Yeah, so. Yep, yes. That's pretty typical. So why don't you run again at five and we'll look at it. Thank you. Okay. Gail called us on one, a motion to buy a chipper out of the. Capital building, uh, capital equipment fund.
I would make that motion.
For twenty five thousand.
Twenty five thousand from the Capitol Building.
Hold a second.
From the Capitol.
Highway equipment fund, sorry. Just to be clear. Yeah, thank you. Alright, any more discussion on favor?
Bye.
I, um, and I don't know if we actually need a motion on the budget, but I think you're clear, Gail, on where we were making adjustments.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on budgets before we move to the, uh, warning for the special town meeting? Nope. Okay, uh, review and sign the warning for the special town meeting. January seventeen regarding resc- rescission. That'll work.
Show up this. Self-check doesn't catch it.
Yeah, anyway, whatever that is. Rescinding the vote on November eight regarding the purchase of the right away from Mountain View. One question I, I had, and it's, it's just a technical question, is that what it said in the warning is not what it said in our purchase and sale contract. And I know that we have to vote on exactly what we voted before. But what we voted before specifically said southern end of the town, uh. To the southern end of the town garage parcel. Just noting that that's there.
Yep.
Um, I think that my question, Gail, and I did reach out to Gail and ask her to make sure that, um. The two neighbors who are kind of the key petitioners knew what we had decided and if they had any feedback to find that out and. You're holding something, so maybe they have something to share.
No, I'm holding.
You're holding that, okay.
The one you have there is upgraded just a little bit.
Okay.
Suggested. It was there. There's too much. Um. To separate out a little bit, that this is information and this is voting.
Yeah.
And he said, we should, shall the voters rescind Article One voted and approved on November eighth? And this is the article that was there.
Yeah.
So we just need this part?
No, we need this.
This whole thing, we sign, yep. And then.
No, I mean, what you're, what you're displaying for the voters.
What's on the ballot?
This is what's on the ballot.
Yeah.
It says the southern end of the town garage person.
And so what's? Just important for everyone to understand is that if you don't want it, you vote yes.
Correct.
So a yes vote means. It's not gonna happen and a no vote means it is gonna happen, which is just important that people understand because it's a little bit backwards.
Yep.
So, so that's gonna go out in the tails and out in front, of course, explaining that.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect.
Cause they're, they're gonna get their ballots before then.
Right, do you wanna explain that?
In the envelope. Well, look, I asked the Secretary of State's office if we had to. Send out ballots to everybody because we did the first time.
Yeah.
Normally, if somebody requested that, some key ballot for the first vote, they automatically get it for the second vote. They don't have to ask again.
Correct.
But because this time it's like board sided, everybody got one. It's like they asked for everybody, so everybody has to get them again.
Okay.
And what we can put in there is a note that said, that says this. The informational meeting is here.
Yep.
And the vote is there.
Yeah, but they need.
We can't put anything else in there that would try to.
Right, to sway on one way or the other.
Correct.
But they, but I just want it explained, so it's clear to them how they're voting, you know?
What rescinding means?
Right, and, and that their yes is actually.
A yes vote means to.
Rescind it.
Rescind it.
Yes.
Which means cancel it.
Yes.
In case somebody doesn't know what rescinding is.
Right.
My read of that email that you shared from the Secretary of State is that we can't put that level of information in there. Is that the way?
Right.
That all we can do, like, there are two issues. One is, we want people to know that we're gonna talk about it on the twelfth. And it would be nice if they listened in or heard that information before they voted on the seventeenth. But if people put their ballots in there before, that is certainly their choice. And we are required to mail them the ballots and we are not allowed to put anything. Further than just the straight facts of, here's this meeting in that.
Right.
So that is what we will do.
Yeah.
And because it is.
And I think if you could.
Not gonna look at this until after Christmas, any Facebook, but they get the ballot from down there.
And the ballot has to be mailed.
I've gotta check that. Probably they have to be available at least twenty days ahead.
Twenty.
I mean, with, with the normal balance, they're ahead, they're ready forty five days ahead of the election. But because this is more than thirty days.
Hmm.
If we have to be out by available by what it is. I have to check. I couldn't find it. I was looking in this thing today, this driver, see, and it didn't really address special elections. It was more.
I see.
General elections.
So did you get any feedback from your email from the adjoining landowner?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I would ask that you share with them the new information that we are, have learned that we're required to mail the ballots and. Um, thus we will do that on approximately such and such a day, just so that.
Communication.
The communication continues.
So. Does that mean that? My ribbon has to go further south?
No. Your ribbon has to go where it's gonna be safe and I think it actually needs to go on this side of the mailbox.
Right, right. Says, your thing says on the southern edge of the property, right?
Well, this is the northern end. That could be, you know, whereas southern would be any place beyond halfway. So it's probably.
It, what it comes down to is the purchase and sale agreement says a mutually acceptable, agreed upon location. And yes, that I read this and I was like, oh, what, what does this mean? I mean, maybe it means we should all vote. Yes, which means no. Vote to vote it down. Right, because this is confusing now. Um. And we will not be working on negotiating anything until this is resolved at the request of Orlando, which I think makes sense.
Yeah, right. We were trying to find out if the bank was gonna approve it or not. The bank approved it, then we wouldn't have to go through this whole thing, but. They would have to spend legal money and their attorney said, why don't you wait until the city town actually gets approval before we go through it?
Right. Um, so a motion to, uh, move forward with the warning.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the warning for the special town meeting.
A second.
More discussion on favor?
I.
Hi.
But let's say twenty twenty three, right, January.
It does, yeah.
Good.
Second. Yep, I woke up in the middle of the night and thought, oh. I didn't put the last one in the Rotten Hero. What's that do? Then I came in and looked and yes, we did. You know, this is built around here, I would pay the. Three o'clock in the morning, I couldn't remember.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know how that is.
Oh, here's the. So I did sort of unofficially give you the update on the, um. Meeting on the town garage and, um. The way we left it is that Scott Burley, who is our project manager with the state, is going to, did you send him that information, Gail?
Stephanie and I talked. Well, I'm gonna send it to her first.
Okay.
I'm still compiling it because there's so many different RFPs that are now, you know, all these different projects. I'm gonna send it to her. She's gonna sift through it and decide what Scott really needs and.
Perfect. So, you know, this is our request, like, can we just use our Potter Creek? And so he wants to review what, what are appropriate processes go. So that's sort of step one. Um, and then we'll, um, work on developing an RFP for a design team if, once that's resolved. We did also ask, like, they made this comment that. Got, I think, everyone's attention. I'm not sure if you were here when this happened. He said, you know. You need to make sure you understand that if you go too far, you're gonna have to pay back all the money if you bail. And I said, okay, tell me exactly where that is. And he didn't actually tell us. So no.
At what, what point?
At what point?
Yeah.
Right.
Right?
Cause he didn't want you to know.
No, I don't think so. He didn't, he didn't know. He kept saying, I'll get back to you and, yeah.
Already too late.
Yep. So.
You're past that point.
That's that, alright. Um.
So they're gonna give this month, if this is money on the bank?
No. I don't believe, well, I don't, I don't know.
Well, if we have to pay it back, then that means they've given us some.
Right.
Well, no, I think like they'll pay Stephanie's bill. You know, they'll, I don't know if they'll give it to us. Like she's our, you could ask her, she would know. She's our, she's getting paid forty thousand dollars to be her project manager.
But luckily it's by the hour, so.
Yes.
Not to exceed the thirty seven thousand.
So he may, David allocate it from there and, and not some of the rest, what do you think?
No, I don't think so. I, I'm not sure how that works. I'll have to ask her.
You know, I'm trying to remember, like, when we did that, um, I think it was called TARP when we did it, the insulation and stuff. I think we did pay for it and then they paid us back.
Right, so where are we gonna come up with three hundred thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars to pay?
Cross that bridge when we get to it.
Just borrow money, can borrow money without voter authorization as long as it's paid back in five years.
Yes. So there you go. There's another cost, the carrying cost of the loan.
That's keep track of or.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember that it's gonna happen.
And that we'd have to pay it back in five years. We would.
Well, you pay it back right when you got reimbursed.
Somebody's got the.
But, yeah.
Then we would pay off the thing.
Hey, it, it is a. Seven twenty four. We could all go home. Is there anything else anyone wants to talk about?
The next regular meeting is on the third.
Which is our, that's what we made our select board meeting, that, right?
Yep.
And typically. Maybe we can be clever enough. For the meeting on the seventeenth. Can you move the E and I committee from seven to eight, seven thirty to eight thirty?
Yeah.
Or usually you have a meeting at the end of January to finally approve the. The warning and any articles and all that other shit.
For the.
We can coordinate that on the seventeenth and you're there counting ballots. Maybe that would be. Say we're moving.
Yeah.
Cause I'm, I mean, to count the ballots, we're gonna separate them into yes, no, yes, no, and.
Right.
That counts each file, two, three times, make sure it's the right number.
Right, that'll be the answer. Just.
Yeah.
So thank you. Yes, remember, we were balking at five.
We made a three. On this month.
Yep.
Okay, lovely to see you all.
So we're done this month.
We're done this month.
This month.
I'm this month.
I don't see you all, Mary.
Well, you too.
Everyone sends their thank you for the bonus.
Okay, actually, I do have one thing I wanna just say. We have not officially adjourned, which is. I would like us to think about celebrating this town garage somehow in January when it's not snowing. And I don't know what that looks like, right? Like, I don't know what that looks like, but this has been a long road and it is something to celebrate. So.
We're gonna break a champagne bottle off in the fire.
I would not do that. We celebrated the town fun day. Have stuff down there for town fun day in July and look at the new garage and. See how much they've tracked dirt in.
Well, there's that.
The toilet's been cleaned out.
We could have an open.
I, I guess I just feel like, yeah, everybody has been seeing, seeing it. You know, they've been driving by.
It's gonna be on the couple of town report.
There you go. Yeah, and wouldn't it be nice to at least sort of, so you tell me, like, you definitely have some move-in stuff. That you'll wanna do. And so is that like, February is a quiet month. We've got the town report out. It's not town meeting. It's no sun.
I would love to have a quiet.
What if we did it on town meeting day early? What happens in the morning on time? Is there like any time on the day that?
No, but see, town meeting, town meeting day now is just a vote.
I know, but it could be more, right? It could be, uh.
You could do the informational meeting down there on Saturday afternoon.
I guess that's what I meant, was the informational meeting, like, we could have an open house or something for the.
Well, we don't have to decide tonight, so I planted the seed and you can all think then, alright. We can do silent disco. You guys know about silent disco. It's pretty fun.
We'll just make a motion in the jury.
Yep.
I, I would be willing to undertake that. On favor.
Bye.
Bye.